Did you ever hear anything further from 48?
You know, Frankie guys came for first words. I wish she'd like you.
What is your name?
Cheryl Huber.
Oh, Huber, I certainly recognize the name.
Yeah, I know your wife.
Did you give them a lot of money maybe they were in Vegas or Dublin?
I was here with the grand jury.
Oh, you're on the grand jury?
Yes.
How do you like it?
I love it.
Oh, you too?
Yeah.
Which one?
Orange County.
I mean, which year?
Oh, this year, right now.
Oh, you're on right now.
Yeah, right now.
Diane just got off.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I was on 99 to 2000.
Oh, were you?
Yeah.
And you enjoyed it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great experience.
Anyway, we're just here to spend a period of time, you know, so that's what we're doing.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
And Mayor Dalton?
Here.
Councilmember Jones and Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen are absent.
At this time, the agenda item is closed session, conference with legal counsel pending litigation as listed on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the oral communications and we'll adjourn to the Founder's Room for a closed session. Who's doing invocation? Who's doing the invocation?
I can sing like God bless America.
Oh, you're gonna sing?
Yeah, they're gonna sing.
Oh, okay. God bless America's always good. How to be an American. Oh, that'd be cool.
Do you know when?
Oh, you make jokes.
I'm just waiting for them to tell me when.
At this time, I'd like to call a Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Dalton?
Here.
Okay, prior to the council meeting, we had a closed session item and there was no reportable action taken. At this time, we will have the invocation by Susan Emery, Community Service Director, and a Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Beard.
Dear God, we ask your blessing upon everyone here this evening. Give us wisdom to make decisions that are good for the entire community, Lord, and we ask for your blessings upon the Garden Grove community. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag. Repeat after me. Where do you begin?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, see, we have a presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a very special presentation this evening, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentation this evening.
This evening, the Garden Grove City Council recognizes the accomplishments of a young woman whose dreams and talent have brought her national attention as Miss California 2012. Would Leah Cecil please come forward? Leah was born and raised in Garden Grove, starting her successful career in pageant competition at the age of 14 while attending Pacifica High School. In 2007, she became Miss Anaheim Outstanding Teen, followed by second runner-up for Miss California Outstanding Teen the same year. In 2011, 20-year-old Leah, a junior majoring in music at Cal State Fullerton, was crowned Miss Garden Grove and soon after placed first runner-up for Miss California. Following her reign as Miss Garden Grove, Leah went on to win the title of Miss Southern California Regional 2012. Leah is now a Cal State Fullerton graduate with a degree in music. She is the principal harpist with a number of orchestras, including Cal State Fullerton, the La Marata Symphony, and the Orange County Symphony. She currently teaches harp at Diamond Bar High School with the desire to pursue a master's degree in music. In addition to being an outstanding musician, Leah is an award-winning artist and recognized humanitarian who supports a nonprofit called Compassionate Harps, which raises money for the needy. This group was featured on ABC Channel 7, Cool Kids. On June 30th, 2012, in Fresno, California, Leah was a triple preliminary winner for talent, swimsuit, and evening wear, and was awarded the title of Miss California 2012 from a group of 58 contestants. Wearing the crown of Miss California for the remainder of the year, Leah will represent the Golden State in the 2012 Miss America Pageant in January. We wish her great success. This Thursday, Leah will be our featured speaker at the annual Food for Thought luncheon that brings together seniors from local high schools and community leaders for lunch and sharing of experiences. Leah is the first Food for Thought speaker who is a graduate of Garden Grove schools, and she is a great role model for our students. At this time, the city council would like to congratulate Leah for all of her accomplishments and thank her for being an outstanding representative of the city of Garden Grove. Best wishes for continued success.
Whoa. Crap.
Too excited.
It wasn't me, that's fine. Oh, picture and then a few words.
I should call for them.
That's okay. You got his elbow with the last shot.
You got it?
Too tall for this microphone. But I just wanted to let you know I come here with humility but pride as a Garden Grove girl. And it's, I always say to my peers and my family, and you know, here's Stacy Margol and the Director of Garden Grove Pageant, it's just, it's just been an amazing journey and a roller coaster for me, as you heard in my bio, coming in this organization at age 14. And I started as an awkward 14-year-old girl with no, with no knowledge of my capabilities, no knowledge of performance and playing my harp on stage and talking to people. I just, I had no experience in that. And the Miss America organization brought that to me and gave me those opportunities to earn scholarship money and to learn about myself and grow as a young woman. And I'm glad that I was able to start that here in my own hometown of Garden Grove. And here I am as a former Miss Garden Grove and now I'm Miss California, and it's just been so surreal. Sometimes I go to different events and people are saying, you know, hi, Miss California, and it's still so surreal sometimes to think, okay, like this was something that I have wanted. It hasn't been something that I've thought of my whole life, but it's definitely something that I wanted ever since I was Miss Garden Grove, and here I am. It's just been a great cherry on top, and I look forward to preparing for Miss America further on and hoping that I make California look good and especially Garden Grove. And just the fact that some of you came to my homecoming party just really meant a lot to me because I just felt the Garden Grove love, and I've just felt so blessed to have the community behind me. And like you heard earlier, I will be speaking at the Marriott Suites Hotel at the Food for Thought luncheon, and I hope you can, I hope you all can come and listen to what I have to say to those high school students. Actually, I think my brother will be in attendance, so that'll be interesting for him to have to hear his sister again. But I know that it'll be such a great event, and I just cannot thank you enough for all of your community support. I've always told everybody that I meet that, you know, I come from Garden Grove, and the city of Garden Grove really cares about their citizens, and they really care, especially about the Miss America organization, and I've seen the lack of that in other cities. So to come, to come here to your city council event is just one of the many things that you've invited me to and that you've included me in, and I just, I can't share enough how grateful I am for all of you, and I'm proud to be a Garden Grove girl, and I thank you again.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to oral communications for the council and for the successor agency.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I own a business, family business, for almost now 10 years in the city of Garden Grove as a hookah lounge of a book host and lamps and call Aziz Cafe. I cannot locate to any location or any place because the city regulation and the coding was put on us, and I'll accept it. A few weeks ago, I found a location, I tried to move in, but the city planning said and the city zoning said it's not zoning for a hookah bar. So I accept that. I saw somebody moving in as a neighbor. I went to ask him if he need any help or something to the location, located at 12342 Booker Street. I went to ask him if he need any help because, you know, we are neighbor, business neighbors, and he said, I said, what kind of business you gonna open? He said he's opening a hookah lounge. So I was surprised by this move, and he's still doing the modeling in the place, and that's just gonna, it's not zoning for this location. So I hope the city councilor will take any action to stop it from starting because a few years ago, we had the same problem. It was very costly for my business to close, to shut the other unlicensed business, and I lost almost 20 to 15 percent of my revenue for my business at that time. So I would like the city of Garden Grove to take consideration about this location and see what kind of business they're gonna open over there before they open it and it's not licensed to be open.
What's the address?
It's 12342 Booker Street. I supply all the councilmen with a letter and everything about the location, even the police, chief Randy was it, you know? So my consideration is, a lot of people try to open businesses with not applying for city licenses, and I went by all the rules and by the old regulation for the businesses, and I hope everybody will go buy it and abide by the rules.
We'll get back to you on it. We'll definitely go by it within the next week, within this week or next week and get back to you.
I appreciate it.
Does that have a suite?
No, it's, it used to be restaurants, they used to do like a wedding party in it and stuff like this. It's about 50 feet away from residential, and usually the regulation said you have to be about 200 away from any residential businesses. That's the regulation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl Huber and Dorothy Allen.
Hello.
Good evening.
We're from the grand jury, the Orange County Grand Jury, and we are here just to recruit people, to see if we could get some people that would like to volunteer for the grand jury. Both of us can attest that it's a very, very educational experience, a lot of fun, we're having a good time, very busy, and anyway, we have some brochures and...
One thing we would like you to know is that there's 19 of us, and we were told many times by the team leaving that we needed to work together. We don't work together. We have a great time together. We have a lot of fun getting to know one another and finding new friends from different parts of town and the county, and it's been quite an experience. And one thing we are doing is, two or three weeks from now, we are going as a grand jury to Sacramento as guests to inspect their water, the state's water resources. And that's something even, I know all of the cities need to be interested in, but one way to get all of you excited about joining is to know that you get paid $50 a day plus mileage. So I hope that's incentive enough for everyone to take a look at the opportunity available to you.
A lot of people think we just do jury trials. We don't do that. We don't decide anybody's guilt or innocence. We do, we do sit in on indictments, and we do sit in on investigative hearings, and mainly we're a watchdog for the county. And so we can investigate different county agencies and county government, and it's, like I said, it's very educational.
Thank you.
Full-time job?
Full-time job, five days a week.
Thank you very much. Okay, Verla Lambert?
Thank you very much.
Your bet.
Verla Lambert, Garden Grove, California. Been here for almost 50 years plus. And again, yes, it's a very good city. I would not still be here if it wasn't, and I do care about it, and I've had the help of councils and my community. And I also have a, take the privilege of coming to council and voicing some of my opinions. Why I'm here again tonight to talk about the marijuana shops. On last Wednesday's paper, we have here where they are, the community is urging intervention in Huntington Beach. That is to the south of us. The landlord evicted a clinic in Anaheim. That's to the north of us. There should be some way, I've been here enough to know all the things that you can't do, but there should be some way, somehow, that these cities can work together, and we could, if we do it all at once, if we help each other, and if we just sit here and we do nothing, the north and the south will make it very easy for them to come in here and join our group of shops. And we already have over our quota. And I just, somebody told me the squeaking wheel gets the grease, so I squeak a lot. But this was in last Wednesday's paper, and I thought it was worth me squeaking again. And we do have good people here in Garden Grove. I'd like to see them protected, and we don't need this. We just don't need this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I would like to also commend the members of the Orange County Grand Jury for putting their lives aside to serve for a year. I think it's a marvelous experience. I was on it from 99 to 2000. My wife Diane just got off the grand jury. She was on it last year. It's a great experience and a terrific thing that you can do for the community of Orange Now, driving around Garden Grove, I noticed a proliferation of signs for candidates. Looks like the developers are going all out to promote their favorite boys. But we'll see how things turn out. Years ago, my wife Diane and I used to travel around the country. We would plan our summer vacations around national bridge tournaments. We traveled to cities all over, Washington DC, Boston, down into Louisiana at New Orleans. We went to Phoenix, Salt Lake City, some cities in California, San Francisco and San Diego had national bridge tournaments. Many of them were right here locally in Anaheim. We also traveled to Vancouver, British Columbia, and Toronto, Ontario, which is where my wife's from originally. But when we decided to take our vacation in the summer to attend these tournaments, we had to budget. We had to figure out how much it's going to cost us for travel, how much for our entertainment, bridge fees, how much for food, and how much for our accommodations. Now, we usually booked our hotel accommodations through the American Contract Bridge League. So we would be put into a hotel that was close to where the tournament was being held. So it was a matter of convenience, a place that was close enough for us to walk to the tournament. Now, when we talk about the tax that's on the ballot, Proposition Y, to change the bed tax from 13 percent to 14.5, when we looked at our hotel accommodations, we did not consider how much the bed tax was for that particular region. We wanted the best location, and that's what people who come to this area from Chicago or Des Moines, Iowa are looking for, the best location. I don't think a single one of them is gonna look at the difference in the bed tax when figuring out where they want to stay. They want to be here where it's convenient so that they can visit Disneyland, Knott's Berry Farm, the theme restaurants on Beach Boulevard, the Discovery Science Center in Santa Ana, not to mention our wonderful beaches. And they want someplace that's convenient for them, and they will book those based on their particular budgets, including what it's gonna cost them for entertainment. And I am in support of the increase in the bed tax, but I wonder, why are we just going from 13 to 14 and a half? Why not go all out to 15? However, the 1 and 1/2 percent, I think, should be set aside into a special fund, and I think that should be held in reserve. So if the Great Water Park doesn't turn out the way it's supposed to, and the property owners in Orange County are going to be stuck with a $47 million bond issue, at least we'll have some money in reserve so we won't have to end up laying off firefighters and police officers. I hope I'm wrong. I hope the Great Water Park is a great success, and if so, maybe that 1 and 1/2 percent set aside could be used to help fund the Vietnam War Museum here in Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here once again to speak on behalf of the speaker series for the Vietnam War Museum Foundation of America. We'd like to invite the public out on Thursday, November 8th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Courtyard Center at 12732 Main Street, Garden Grove. You need to make a reservation, 714-741-5280. The event is free. The first speaker in this three-part series will be Van, Franz Van der Broek. He is a Vietnam veteran of the United States Army. He holds the Distinguished Flying Cross and the Purple Heart. So come out and support the efforts of the museum to get word out about the museum, and if you know some veterans that can write a check or corporations that would like to be part of this museum, it would be greatly appreciated. A couple, a little notes on the war itself. As a reminder, August 4, 1964, Lyndon Johnson signed the Gulf of Tonkin Resolution, officially declaring it an American military action. Although there was no formal declaration of war, the war continued until Black April, April 29th, with the fall of Saigon in 1975. In 1965, in February, the United States Marines pushed ashore at Da Nang with the statement to the Congress by Lyndon Johnson that said, "We have no wider ambition in this war. We only, we seek no wider ambition for ourselves, and we seek no wider war." Well, 11 years later, that war finally ended. But this week is a milestone also. This week, now Afghanistan has passed Vietnam as the second longest war in United States history. During the Vietnam conflict, we lost 58,000 Americans. This week, we passed the 2,000 milestone in Afghanistan. 3 million Americans served in the Vietnam conflict. 15 percent of those soldiers, 450,000 of them, suffered from post-traumatic stress syndrome, and they still suffer today. This is a war that still needs to be discussed. There's many soldiers out there that's still suffering today, and these wars in Iraq and Afghanistan only make the situation worse. So you don't ever leave these types of things behind. You know, the word sacrifice comes from the Latin, and it means to make something sacred or holy. So we questioned as a soldier, what is sacrificing? Sacrificing one's time for the greater good. What was the greater good in Vietnam? This question is still being discussed today, and it's an issue that this museum hopes to succeed in bringing to the attention of generations that will fight wars in the future again. So please support this organization, make this a great endeavor. I think it's gonna be a great contribution to the tourist area on... I think it's going to be a great contribution to the tourist area on Harbor Boulevard. And the hotels that will come in the future here, people will stay an extra week, an extra couple of days to come and visit the museum. So the people that are on the board are dedicated to build a great, great organization. If you look at how the Bowers Museum started in Santa Ana, there's no telling how high we can go with this museum, because it has all the makings of something great for the city of Garden Grove and put us on the international map. So please help support all the events that the museum puts on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, Josh McIntosh, city council candidate for 2012. We have an election coming up in a month, and I'm taking advantage of this public forum to share some information to the people of Garden Grove who may not be aware of some of the things that are going on with the campaign. I have run a modestly financed campaign. I do not have the same financial backing as our incumbent candidates. I spent less than $500 on the small lawn signs and few banners that I had printed right here in Garden Grove. I find it disturbing that Councilman Broadwater spent $658 of his printing in the city of Irvine, $3,500 on printing in Fountain Valley. Councilman Jones also spent $3,500 on signs made in Fountain Valley. Chris Beard spent over $5,000 for his signs made in Santa Ana, and another $900 on signs at some company we can't find on Google. So much for buying in Garden Grove, gentlemen. Unlike Councilman Broadwater, I was not given $2,500 from my campaign from the McWhinney Development Company. McWhinney, as you know, is the development company that we gave, the council gave our construction contract and valuable land to along Harbor Boulevard. This is the contract that the residents will be paying $47 million for with a 20-year repayment schedule, should the park stay in business and not file bankruptcy. I would have loved to see McWhinney, an established and successful company, to have paid their own construction costs and the land they're building on, like so many other companies do. I think McWhinney has been very appreciative of their contract terms, and in return, has been very generous to Mr. Broadwater. Councilman Broadwater has also found some generous support from the Brandywine Homes Development Company. Brandywine has given Councilman Broadwater $1,000 to his campaign as a little thank you for his continued support of their company. I'm sure he'll be voting on another project of theirs soon, and he'll be voting in favor of them again. This is the same Brandywine Homes, which receives nearly every development contract for townhomes and apartment complexes in this city. The same company which our Councilman Jones has a little hush-hush relationship, which might be of potential conflict of interest. Well, I'm pretty interested in that. One day, we might get the whole story on that one. Brandywine, of course, has made another generous campaign donation to Mr. Jones's campaign. Councilman Chris Beard has come a long way. Seems like just yesterday, he was being appointed councilman, and now he's receiving the financial backing from our contracted vendors, as well as $1,000 from Mr. Broadwater. Good job. As you may or may not know, if Mr. Broadwater is elected mayor again, this council will have the power to appoint another councilperson to serve the next four years. This appointed person will not be somebody who's going to go against the grain or offer any real contribution to the council. Our appointed councilmembers are selected to vote along with the current regime. This is a highly sought-after position, and we have a city candidate, city council candidate, Mr. Fat Boy, who seems to be really gunning for that appointed spot, because he donated $1,500 to Mr. Broadwater's campaign. I think he really wants that appointment pretty bad. This information is available to the public at the city clerk's office, and is the only place where it's a requirement for these councilmen to report what donations they're being given from the development companies whom they so greatly support. I encourage everyone to look into this. As a concerned citizen, I have to ask myself, are these men truly working for the good of our citizens, or are they working for the good of the developers who finance their campaigns? Do you think that their judgments might be influenced on voting in favor of the companies that are financially backing them? Can we really trust them to make an unbiased decision for us? I have to wonder if our city council had supported all the businesses in Garden Grove equally, if we would have as many vacant storefronts and out-of-work people. What if they were fighting for so hard for all businesses like they fought for their hotel projects? I would have loved to seen the council negotiate better contracts for the people of Garden Grove. If I'm elected, I will certainly make every effort to involve our residents in the planning process. As I have suggested before, I want to introduce community benefit agreements to the city to ensure we no longer have favoritism, one side of deals that don't offer any benefits to our residents. I would ask these developers to give back to our community. McWhinney and Brandywine should be sponsoring scholarships to our graduating students. They should be supporting the restoration of our historic society and our vacant Gem Theater. Unfortunately, they're just donating to our politicians. When the council awards Brandywine with the next contract for the 25-unit apartment complex that replaces one house, I'd like everyone here to consider what I've said. Ask yourselves, are these councilmen really having allegiance to the residents of Garden Grove, or are they just taking care of their developer friends?
Okay, Josh, we wrap it up.
My name is Josh McIntosh. I want to bring integrity back to our city hall, and I hope to have your vote this November.
Thank you. Rod Powell.
Okay. Unlike Ms. California, I need to lower this. My name is Rod Powell, and it's good to see you all tonight. And I try to buy in Garden Grove. I'm sure Deena tries to buy in Garden Grove. And FYI, which is for your information, there are printing shops. I use one in Garden Grove. You know, just to let you know. I appreciate the two women who came in here promoting the opportunity to get on the Grand Jury. I used to come in here, and I was, for a while, reading almost page by page from the Grand Jury Report on fireworks and why they should be banned. And the amount of work that the people that prepared that report, put into that, was unbelievable. And if you really listened to what I had to say, or if you ever took the time to read that report, Councilman Jones had the nerve to insult the report and the people that put it together, had the audacity to insult them, probably hadn't even read the report, probably didn't listen, like he's not listening to me now, he's not even giving me the time of day, and had the nerve to insult them. Don't worry, you're still going to get probably elected. What Council, what Mr. McIntosh had to say, I agree with pretty much everything he said. I couldn't, I don't know how I feel about Brandywine. You know, I actually like some of their things they put together. I don't like the idea that in order to do that, they would put a member, they would have one of their in guys on our city council. I don't like that. I don't like the fact that they would pay money to our councilmembers to get yes votes. You know, I don't like that. You know, that doesn't, that seems, what's the word, corrupt, illegal? Anyways, that's not all I was going to talk about. I was actually going to talk about medical marijuana. I do have the page that you'd asked. I ran into Deena at the Bank of America in Garden Grove. And before I, to talk about this, I just wanted to say, I saw that former councilmember Rosen had, has resigned from being the city representative for the Vector Board, and I commend him for having continued to do work for our city even after he left the council. I wish him the best of luck. So, for what that's worth. This is a report in brief from the cannabis law group's Medical Marijuana Legal Blog. Can't see too good. I got a 20-year-old pair of glasses while I get mine repaired, or replaced, rather. Anyways, this report had some things in it. You didn't say anything that bad, Deena, but you did say, what was it? Something about a thou, or no, Chief Rainey said something about keeping them 1,000 feet from residential neighborhoods. And if I'm not mistaken, there's one at Brookhurst in Orangewood. You know, I drive past that every single day. And I mean, it's only, there's houses right, just next door. And I'm sure it's that way all over the place. You're not, you're not following any of the guidelines, the stuff that Mr. Fertel, Fertal, how do we pronounce that? I don't mean to say it wrong if I say it wrong. The things that you promised on that day, it's all a bunch of malarkey. It was all stuff just to get through the day. Now you look at the city of Los Angeles, in case you haven't heard, they flip-flopped, and now they're putting the dispensaries back, you know, in case you don't read the newspaper or the internet, which I do for the register. And because, largely because one councilmember happens to be legitimately in need of compassionate use, medical marijuana. And because of, see how easily councilpeople can be influenced? That's such a great reason to completely flip-flop, make themselves look like idiots, and redo the whole thing because one councilmember actually needs it. You know, the whole thing is not set up as it should be. I'm sure we have far more dispensaries right now. Somewhere in here, it said something about, Deena said something about, so that we can follow the law. Well, they weren't following the law to begin with. They had how many dispensaries before we even, they were already saying, "We're going to do things our way." The dispensaries, they're the ones that rule and own you guys. They, you are just their servants, just so you know. They run this city. That's how they feel, and that's how it is. And you guys aren't doing anything about it. And as a citizen that is in favor of you guys wanting to, I want you to do something about it, I wish that you could. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close oral communications and go to the successor agency.
I would like to mention one thing first.
All right.
He mentioned the marijuana facility at Brookhurst in Orangewood. A lot of kids walk by there to go to school. The one thing we could do is make them knock out that stupid, ugly sign I know nobody gave them permit to have. So would somebody look into that and see if we can knock that out?
Okay, we'll go to successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll now call the successor agency meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call Ross?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Nguyen.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. We did oral communications simultaneous with council, so we'll go to consent items.
I have to pull 2B.
Okay.
Move for, to approve 2A to C.
Second, call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
2B.
I'll move on 2B.
Second.
Call the vote. Okay, we have no public hearings. Item for consideration, 4A.
Mr. Chairman, your item is award of contract for paving contract on Harbor Boulevard, and Bill Murray is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Fertal, members of the successor agency. Tonight, the agency is being asked to award a contract to Pulp Incorporated, and they're doing business as Excel Paving, for the construction of improvements required to vacate the frontage road on the west side of Harbor Boulevard between Palm and Lamson. The improvements will include the relocation of underground electrical conduits and a water line, the construction of storm drain improvements, and new westerly curb and gutter, and the modifications of existing raised center median in Harbor. All of these improvements are required to be constructed by the agency as part of the Water Park Hotel Development Agreement. Staff received three qualified bids on July 17th, with GMC Construction submitting the lowest apparent bid of just over $1,245,000. During the process of reviewing the bids, staff determined that GMC violated the project specifications by providing a bid result that had them doing less than half of the work as the, as the prime contractor. As a result, the bid was deemed non-responsive, and the award for the contract must fall to the next apparent low bidder, which was Excel Paving. Excel Paving came in at $1,256,000, just, just over that. That bid was reviewed and determined to be responsive by staff. Concurrent with this process was a receipt and review of a bid protest by Excel Paving. Staff is recommending that the agency uphold the protest, and should the agency decide to award the construction contract tonight, Excel Paving, Excel Paving can begin work in January of this next year. And this work will be complete around June of next year, as we're trying to work around the Water Park's construction schedule. It should be noted that the city will not be using general funds, but rather funds from the state for this project. This concludes staff's report.
Yes. Thank you. Any questions to staff?
Yes. How long is this stretch of project?
The, the frontage road? It's in front of the Water Park Hotel. It's that little frontage road that feeds to the, the current, what is it, Mobile Home Park? I forget the name of the Mobile Home Park.
Okay.
Mobile issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Any matters from agency members?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned.
We'll reconvene the city council meeting, let the record show that all members are present, and we go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, you have items 6A through 6E to be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a councilmember.
I'd like to pull 6D. Move the items, the remaining items.
Second.
Okay, motion second, corporate vote.
Can you do that again, please?
Motion received, four yes votes.
I'm sorry, five yes votes.
And 6D.
Like to move 6D.
Second.
Corporate vote.
Sorry about that.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay. Commission committee matters.
Mr. Mayor, you have a letter of resignation from Mark Rosen, our representative on the Orange County Vector Control. He's no longer a resident of Garden Grove and has given up his seat.
Okay, we'll, we'll, receive it with.
Regrets.
Regrets, and please send a letter out to him, expressing that to him, and thanking him for his years of service. Okay. Bruce.
Are you in the comments? I don't have any. Okay. I'd just like to say that a fellow that had been involved in the city of Garden Grove passed away Sunday, Tom Petrosine. He has, oh, I don't know, he has four or five grandchildren, he has two daughters and a son. Tom was president of the Chamber of Commerce. He was the president of the Strawberry Festival, chairman of the Planning Commission, and he was president of the nighttime Kiwanis probably a number of times. He was really a good guy. He's a, I'm going to miss him a lot. He was really a close friend, and he, he, he was the type of guy that could arrive on your, knock on your door when you're really feeling down about something, and he'd be there to tell you something to make you feel better. He just was a all-around type great guy. I'm going to miss him a lot.
Yes, and I'd like to express the same condolences to Tom Petrosine's family. Also, remember to buy in Garden Grove. Happy birthday to Councilmember Jones. And also, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Rosen for serving the city after his term in office, and having worked with him on many, many community projects. He's a very giving person and a public servant, and I'm sure he is going to continue that wherever he moved to. And I want to express that thank to Mr. Rosen, and wish him lots of luck.
Yeah, just echo the condolences for Tom Petrosine. He sure was a neat guy and a, and a longtime Garden Grove guy. Also, just to mention that this weekend coming up is the Korean-American Festival. They'll have all kinds of festivities and booths and food, so please come out and enjoy a bit of our Garden Grove culture this weekend with the Korean Business District crowd.
Happy birthday, Councilmember Jones. Speaking of things coming up, it's that time of year, happy haunting at the Jack-o'-lantern Jamboree at Atlantis Playground. I'm surprised Councilmember Jones didn't mention this. You have young ones. I'm sure you'll probably be attending. It is a, the 14th Annual Jack-o'-lantern Jamboree. And I mention this only because pre-sale tickets will be available starting October 5th through the 25th, 15, excuse me, October 15th through the 25th. And it's a spooktacular time, I think it is, and games, fun, treats for the kids, $7 per person is always a good value, and it's a great wholesome entertainment for the kids. It's a great place to go, so I encourage you to attend that with your kids. That's it.
Okay, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting in honor of. Okay, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting in honor of Tom Petrasine and our prayers go out to his family. And we're going to adjourn, but I want everybody who's here to go in the other room because we're going to have some cake to celebrate Steve's birthday and he won't tell you how old he is, so whoever guesses, we have the jelly beans, we'll give them to you. Okay, we'll adjourn till the regular meeting Tuesday, October 23rd, 5:30 p.m. here.